I will call the June the 15th work session order and ask that Daniels bring forward the folks wishing to speak, please turn off your cell phones. And we are proud to have Dean Bucci with us, a Superior Court Judge, and other elected officials help me out, since somebody hasn't seen one. Seeing none others, we just welcome all of you as honored guests, special guests for participating in county government. And it's very nice to have Gene Morehouse with us this morning from West Side Christian Church to lead us in our invocation and pledge the flag. Stay in grace.
Let's go toward Lord in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you that you have created and made all things visible and invisible. We ask that you be with our commissioners, with their attorney, and we ask, Lord, that you watch over our county, protect our people, guide them and direct them. And as I was talking to an officer earlier, it'd be a wonderful thing to live in a county that had no sin, no problems, no crimes, and everything was smooth. But we know that that's our future with you in heaven. As your Son prepares a place for us, may we prepare our hearts to meet him. May we look forward to the day when there is that time when safety rules and safety awards won't be passed out, there'll be just plain a safe place to be. To glorify you as our heavenly Father, to enrich our lives, be with each one of the commissioners, strengthen them, help them make wise decisions, help them to be the men that you want them to be. Help that attorney, help her to keep them aligned with man's law, and also that they may set forth an example of moral laws. In Jesus' name, all God's family says.
Amen.
Please, let's have the pledge now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Thanks so much, Pastor Morehouse. You're a pleasure to be here. The May 23rd work session minutes, along with the regular board meeting minutes, are available for review. Under positively calling today, we have a segment on libraries, library's STEAM engine.
I'm with the West Georgia Regional Library System. We have a mobile innovation lab that we're calling the STEAM Engine. STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts and Mathematics. We received a grant from the state to put together some STEAM-related activities. So what we decided to do is to make a mobile innovation lab, where we bring it out to the facilities, to libraries, schools. One of our sort of crowning jewels of the innovation lab is a 3D printer. Within the electronics module, we have these things called little bits, which are sort of like little circuit boards that can connect together without any soldering or wiring, and kids and adults can make all sorts of inventions by using these. We also have cumulants, which are electronic building blocks, where they're different colors, represent different things, like input, output, motion, activation, sorts of things. They can be connected together like building blocks. They're magnetic. They get put together, and they can turn into little robots, and kids can control them in various different ways. We also have Ozobots, which are little, itty-bitty robots that follow lines that people draw. It's a really awesome way to teach kids about coding, because they can add different colors within their lines, and the robots do various sorts of things. One of the other really cool things we have here today is a Makey Makey, where kids can play games, they can play bongos, they can play piano, with any water base. We're more than happy to bring it out to any schools, to any of the libraries. Feel free to give us a call or give us an email, and we'd love to bring it out to you. It's all about promoting the library, for more than just books these days.
Ozobots, that's what the marshals have been, that's been followed around marshals at the events of, I'm sure if you had, right? All you have in your little Ozobot. Speaking of the marshals, it's a pleasure this morning to have Major LaHome on behalf of the Board of Commissioners present the Public Safety Appreciation Award to Officer Tommy Diggs.
Tommy, you gotta come up. Yeah, no, I did. We love when family walks in, and he's like, why is my family here? That's going on. You gotta go all the way up. The Marshall Group wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate Officer Tommy Diggs on this award. Officer Diggs has been employed with us since September of 2016. Prior to us, he worked six years with Carroll County Sheriff's Office. He is assigned to our administrative division, is responsible for conducting alcohol compliance checks for businesses that are serving and selling alcohol. In addition, he has taken on the zoning enforcement, which is a big one for us, because Anne can probably tell you, it's very confusing, and there's a lot to it. So he has actually taken that on and has done very well with it. While this area is new to him, he has taken the challenge head-on and focused on becoming more familiar with the zoning violations. One thing that's easier for me to show is by pictures, and Tommy likes to really get into like his role with zoning violations, so this one is probably one of the best ones that we have. He deals a lot with roosters and chickens, and sometimes he just gets into the role. He's very positive. See, we play a lot of jokes on each other, so this one is like the ultimate today. Officer Diggs has a very positive attitude. He never complains about any task or assignment given to him. He's very prompt in responding to complaints and stays on top of all his cases. He maintains contact with all his suspects and complainants, providing updates until the violations are resolved. He has received several complaints from complainants, and in many cases, they express their appreciation for what he's done. This next one is a good one of how he often goes above and beyond, so he's ready to do what he wants. On a particular occasion, Officer Diggs was scheduled to offer an appointment that he had seen, and then he had seen through email, that we were going to be short that day, and an employee was out sick, without ever even saying anything to us, he immediately called in, changed his appointment, and came to work on his scheduled title. That's big with us, because you never know what's going to happen on day-to-day. This kind of dedication is very rare, and Officer Diggs is to be committed for his dedication to this department, but most importantly, to his coworkers. He volunteered recently on a huge project that him and Lieutenant Daniel came up with for Paulding Public Safety, and it was a way to raise money for it, and was fishing with the badges. They took it on themselves and raised about three grand for it, which was a big deal. But we keep trying to tell him that he will never catch a fish as big as Lieutenant Daniel, but he keeps trying. So Tommy really appreciates all you do, and we think we're glad you're with us. So congratulations.
Thank you.
So the Public Safety Appreciation Award, this award is presented to Tommy Diggs, the recognition of outstanding service this community, presented by the Paulding County Board of Commissioners this fifth day of June 2017. Thanks for all the pictures, Major LaHome. The Chamber of Commerce Program Director, Ms. Shelby Appone, is going to give us an update or give us a report on the Washington flying trip. The Chamber President, Ms. Hamby, was unable to be here, but we're delighted to have you, Shelby. Thanks.
Thank you. And thank you, Chairman Quinlan, for all these measures. The Chamber of Commerce has a very important and active governmental affairs committee that is comprised, is comprised of chamber members that set a federal, state, and local legislative agenda for our chamber. As part of this committee, the Chamber has been doing a Washington flying for over 20 years, targeting those areas identified, which this year were economic development, transportation, the regional grid reservoir, and healthcare. Although all the items of our agenda are important, transportation is a fourth front with the new interchange proposed at Third Army Road, and also state Route 92 corridor, which will improve connectivity to I-75 and I-20 for all of our citizens. Because of the great need for the Third Army Road project, we were joined by Commission Chairman Boyes with Cobb County, and Commission Chairman Taylor from Arto County. Cobb County originally had the idea for this interchange 15 years ago, and with recent population increases, this interchange would fit in all three counties. To quote Scott Green, our Director of Transportation here in Paulding, "It's fixable to have the chamber and the three counties united on one goal." I think we got their attention. I would like to point out that one of the things that makes our trip to DC powerful, more powerful than some of our surrounding chambers, is the fact that we do meet one-on-one with our delegation, rather than as a group with other chambers, which then comes more for the metro, regional, and state issues that you're making about. So we dwell directly on the things that are going to make a difference in Paulding. Thanks to Mark Ledford, which Mark's here today, with Roman Caldwell. We were guests of Captain Logan Gower from Marine barracks, Washington DC, and had the distinct honor and such a privilege to attend the U.S. Marine Sunset Parade held at the Iwo Jima Memorial at Arlington National Cemetery. Also attending that day, I have pictures of people that would like to see them later, was newly-elected Supreme Court Justice Neil Gorsuch, and I walked right up to him and goes, "Yes, I did, yes." And I've got some fabulous pictures. They were looking at me like, where is this woman coming from?
The Secret Service was around.
It was awesome. The memorial service was just a very humbling experience that makes you realize how very blessed we are for all our freedoms as Americans, and just so thankful for those who are serving today and those who have served in the past. And of course, in light of the recent events yesterday at DC, we just all need to keep those thoughts in our thoughts and prayers. Our governmental affairs committee is open to all chamber members. Anyone interested in being a part of that committee, please let me know. Please get us a call with the chamber. And again, thank you for participating in the flying and for allowing us this time this morning.
Thanks so much, Shelby and Doris. The four congressmen that we saw all expressed, they knew it's difficult to get up there on the airlines and, you know, saw the arrangements, all the logistics, but that it was definitely worthwhile to get in front of them to set us apart from other counties and regions of the state, so definitely worthwhile. No bill awards, or reports from committees and departments. Finance Director, Ms. Tavitha Pollard's going to update us on the budget.
You guys, whichever right here. For the budget process, though, while we're waiting on this, over the past few months, we've done things a little bit differently. We had a budget work session where all five of you came together with department heads to hear what they had, request, more information about their request. And from that, we've had, we've put together the chairman's proposed budget. We've met with a couple of citizens since that time to go over the budget a little bit more, and we have the budget is out for review. And I would encourage everybody that's interested to take a look at it. We have, it's available at the libraries, it's available here in the lobby, it's available in my office, it's available at, it's available, sorry, I can't do two things at one time. It's available online. That's the easiest place, I think, for most to get it. So if you go to Departments, under Finance, and Forms and Documents, and the 2018 proposed budget, and that's where everyone can go to and look at it for review. There's a few things that I wanted to mention that are upcoming, and those are the, I have them on the slide, but I'm just going to give them to you. They are, the 25th of July, we will have two public hearings. One public hearing will be for the military, and we will start advertising for that around the week of, the first week of July. The proposed military within the budget is, for M&amp;O is 6.5, and it requires three public hearings, and one of those will be on July 25th at 10:00 a.m. We will have another one on July 20th, a budget hearing on July 25th at 10:00 a.m. as well. So we have military and a budget at July 25th at 10 o'clock. We have a milage at 7:00 p.m. on July 25th. We'll have another milage on August 8th at 10 o'clock, and you will adopt the milage as well as the budget on August 8th at 2:00. If, I'm so sorry. If you have any questions, I'm trying to put together some frequently asked questions. Those are the dates, so that the viewing audience will be able to see this as well. And if you have any questions, I'm trying to put together some frequently asked questions, so that we can address various items before we get to the budget. And you can send those to my email address, or you can call. This is the general number for the Finance Department. You don't have to ask it from me, just leave, just mention to staff that you have a budget question, what that budget question is, and I will get it. We will release it as we update these frequently asked questions. Does any of you have anything specific you want?
Sounds beautiful. Thank you, appreciate what you've done, appreciate your work. Thanks, Tavitha. It's a pleasure to have Major LaHome come forward and give us a rundown of the run with the badges.
I'm just going to scroll through some pictures while I give you all some information. Paulding Public Safety Appreciation, which is PPSA, has been around for eight years. Our 5K Glow Run, which you're seeing up there now, is our most successful event in our history. The races run tremendously in the last four years. The first year we had the run, we had 400 runners, and now we're up to around 1,000. This year, we netted $26,000 on the race, with 3,000 of that being a one-time cost that will benefit us in the future. Some organizations that were represented this year, Paulding Marshals, Sheriff's Office, Animal Control 911, Fire, DA's Office, Westbrook Atlanta Ambulance, Kennesaw State, Cal County Police, Roswell Police, DeKalb DA, Atlanta Police, Cal County Sheriff, Dallas PD, Cobb Fire, Brookhaven, Douglas DA, the Cherokee DA's Office, Cowee's Sheriff's Office, Fayette County, and the EPB, Fire and Health Protection Division. It's important to know on the PPSA that we don't only help those that work in Paulding County, but also those that live here. So all these other agencies like Cal, Brookhaven, even though they are working in another area, if they live here, this also helps them. 2.5% of the registrations were public safety. We average 2.1 race registrations per transaction, meaning nearly every runner signed up with a buddy. We had 2018s, you guys are going to love this. Some of our favorite names are The Young and the Breathless, Honey Buns with Guns, and Scrambled Legs. We have people registered from as far as Warner Robins, Lawrenceville, Ball Ground, and Ranger. 67% of our registrations were from Paulding County. We had two after-party events. One was at Pizza Sack, and the other was at Dallas Public House. Dallas Public House, they gave away free wings to anybody that had a race bib on, and they said they gave away 840 pounds of wings that night. One thing that's amazing in Paulding County, the businesses that supported us, and on the back of our t-shirts, you will see all those businesses. I mean, Paulding County has always stepped up when it comes to supporting public safety, and our local businesses did that again this year. One final bit of amazing information, since 2009, Paulding Public Safety has given back over $100,000 to public safety. And that's just, that's a great number. And that's for anything, for personal needs, like a fire, or injured, anything along those lines, and maybe public safety. It's a wonderful group that's for fantastic cause, and I'm proud to be part of it. We have a lot of fun, and we're able to do great things for public safety. Our next event is the Fishing with the Badges Tournament on September 30th at Lake Altona, and we'd be excited for each of you to come. One thing I wanted to put up there, if you guys can see, that is a number one there under Mr. Carmichael. He did take first place, and it wasn't his age group, and people were saying, well, it's easy to do if there's only one person. But there wasn't. See, right near Dave Carmichael, there was three other ones in there.
How long have you directed that pick for a bit?
This is our fourth year, and I need some folks to stand up. Joseph, stand up, Joseph. He's our president, he pays attention. So everybody clap for him. Joseph does great. He runs rampant, and this is, he does a lot, so we couldn't do this without him. Jessica, Morehouse is on the board. I saw Cassie. Cassie's on board. Of course, Chief Pelfree in the back, too, they're all on board. I got some t-shirts, here you go. Don't mind the sizes, if they're wrong, just let me know. Everybody got small.
You guys better every year, and people always ask about Tony Crew, is he the runner? But I think he's down there passing that water, is that right?
Water, that's not water. I was not there. They would have been poor in some of these.
All right. We have no citizens who have signed up to speak on agenda items. I wonder if you can sit agenda, discuss action on four consent agenda items, which they are, number one, acceptance of streets or perpetual maintenance, which is Westbrook Creek, Bayes Free, Collier Trace, and Eccles Way. Consent item number two, declare items listed as surplus and approve their disposal through action or trade. That's in the Fire Department, the 1999 Ford F-150, serial number 1FTZX1728X November Alpha 81097. And item number three, approve the reception of $624,526 from the FAA for the fiscal year 17 airport improvement program grant, and $145,885.50 for the supplement to environmental assessment grant. And consent item number four, authorize the chairman to sign and have executed all closing documents for the property declared surplus located off the Seven Hills Connector. The closing documents to be signed are attached here too. Would there be any desire from the Board of Commissioners to move any of the consent agenda items to regular business?
Yes, sir. Like to move number three to the regular agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Request for the three being moved to regular business. There is no old business to discuss under new business. Discuss action to authorize the chairman on behalf of Paulding County to accept a grant for the felony drug court and execute all necessary documents to accept said grant. And we're honored to have Judge Bucci and Mr. Frank Baker here to elaborate more on that.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Ms. Skipper. We appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Good morning.
We've got some good news today. We don't have any t-shirts, but we've got some good news. For the third year in a row, we're able to come to you and say, we'd like to continue our Paulding Drug Court, which Judge Bucci is going to talk a little bit about after I do a little housekeeping here, without asking you for any money out of the general fund. And so we're pleased today to present to you that we have received a grant award that we're asking you to accept in the amount of $171,508 from the Accountability Court Committee. And that will help us fund the court for FY18 without, again, without asking for any general fund money. The only additional item that we have with that is there is a match that has to be done by the county, and that match is in the amount of $19,056. And we're requesting that that come out of the date fund. So we've done the appropriate documents. Judge Beavers has signed off on those documents, and we'll present those to the chairman through Tabitha also today. That money is held by the county, it is money that's not used for anything other than drug education or treatment. And so it's appropriate that we do that. And again, that's not general fund money, so it's not affecting the general fund at all. So we've asked your consideration to accept that and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents to make that grant a reality for us. I'd like to personally thank Tabitha Pollard for helping us out quite a bit on this. And day-to-day, as we have budgetary issues with this, she's been great to work with, and she continues to help us with that. Without her help, the grant wouldn't happen either. So we want to publicly thank her for doing that. And then also, in my office, Allison Bryant, who helps with all of the administrative stuff that goes along with it, and she's taken on that extra responsibility for us, and she helps get all that done. So that being said, I'll turn it over to the person of the hour, and that's Judge Bucci, who is executing the drug court and doing an excellent job at doing that. So I've done the housekeeping, Judge Attorney, that's over to you.
Thank you, attorney. And I need to thank lots of folks, starting with Mr. Baker. He helps us every day with the drug court. It really is a team, and I say that all the time. Starts with you all accepting the grant, Ms. Pollard helping us out. There's a lot of day-to-day late work. My request is simply that you consider and approve the grant. And if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer those.
I'd just like to say thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
We talked about that last week, you made me. And I think when you're out in the community and you hear about it, that's great. And I've enjoyed that, and actually met somebody else last week. I thought that was interesting. But also, Mr. Baker, thank you. I remember the first time we talked about it, and what the goals were, and what your all's goals were, and not use a general fund, and doing what you could do. So I'm glad that we could continue down that same path. That helps out, and just thanks for keeping your word and your commitment to move that thing forward. It's a great asset to us.
Appreciate it.
I would just echo how valuable it was for you to bring people that are in the program, I guess it was the last meeting or the meeting before that, and have one young man get up and testify, that that really brought it home, made it personal.
Well, that was moving, and that was a really big deal for for him. He was really worried about speaking in public and speaking before y'all, and in fact, he was asking questions. And I told him, "You know, you need to keep it under 10 minutes." I think it was about 30 seconds. But, it was really moving, and I appreciate you saying what you said.
I had an opportunity to speak to him afterwards, and I just thought, he did a great job. I told him how impressed I was with him. I'm sure he was nervous coming up there to do that. But, he just delivered a great speech to us there, and to see everybody in the room. But, what's neat to me is to see people in the room, in the community, that gather around people and support them, not knowing what's in their history, not knowing what's in their family, not knowing what they've gone through, but yet see what they're trying to do to make things right, and the support that this room and the community gave them. And I just, I think that's the way you treat it. So, again, I thank y'all for what you're doing.
Well, thank you.
Thanks very much. New business item number two, discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into a contract with Crowe Engineering to design the roadway, trails, and paths for future buildings within the reservoir park, the Richmond Creek Reservoir Park, in the amount of $267,000.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Unlike Judge Bucci and Mr. Baker, I'm asking for some money this morning. I don't have any grants available yet that we can go for on this, but I hope those are to come. Everyone is aware of the Richmond Creek Reservoir and its progress, and a lot of that progress is spurring on some activity on our behalf. As you're aware, there is a park element that is along with that reservoir, 160 acres of park property, actually. That will allow the public access to the water and all the activities that come along with that. One of the issues that we have there is that lorry's moving so fast that we've gotta get some roadwork in to lead to a boat ramp that is needed for lorry and for the public access as well. All that has to be, of course, before the water is in, and to go along with that, of course, we've gotta create some fish habitats and things like that to go along with it. Crowe Engineering has been involved with us as far as the concept design, and on the other side with the reservoir work and pipeline to a certain extent. I don't claim to know all about that, but they are familiar with the project, and with that, we've brought it to you today to approve them to do the engineering design for the roadways and the trails and the building paths. And there are some structures that are out there as well, but those structures are not included as part of this. This is just the roadway so that we can get the access to the footprint, to get the boat ramp in, and get started with the others. The boat ramp design is not included as part of this. We'll have to come back to you with the structural engineering recommendation in order to do the boat ramp. Got a little bit of legwork to do with Lori, Kelly, and the folks at Brown and Caldwell, is exactly what it is that we need before we bring that to you. This is just for roadways, trails, and the building paths while the equipment is back in there. All the structures will go along in a later day. Hopefully, not much later. Any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them for you.
Do you know what the distance of these trails will be in roads at this time?
It's kinda fluid, to be honest with you. We've got 160 acres. There's a lot of that property along the buffer that we're gonna have to stay out of, but we can get along as close to it as we can. More of that property is available towards the front of the park access as well, so we can make them as longer, as short as, you know, as we can, depending on what the site allows us to do. Mr. Eddie Wade with Crowe is here. I don't know if they have put a number to those trails yet.
We were just over a mile of roadway on the entrance, and concept planning was a little over three miles of trail that were, I'm gonna try and squeeze some more.
Three miles?
Yes, sir, trails. That terrain, it'll be of varying levels. That terrain, as you know, is a little bit hilly at some points, might not be too flat. So, we'll make it work as quick as we can. Probably have a lot of switchbacks in there or something like that, make it accommodating. Are we gonna know where you're putting all the fish?
I'm gonna know where I'm gonna put them.
I'll get with you.
We've got to, we've been working with DNR, and DNR will take the oboe of the footprint of the water and recommend some placements for fish habitats. And they have already sent us some things. We can do those fairly quickly. If anybody wants to build some for us out of PVC and pipe, call me, I can show you what they're doing, bring it, and we'll throw it in the pond. A lot of those things, all has to be man-made structures. Nothing can be biodegradable, so that it doesn't affect the water system at all. So, it's all got to be man-made. It can be rock, it can be concrete, it can be PVC, it can be perforated drainpipe within the PVC. Lot of neat ideas and concepts for it. DNR will recommend placement of those for us, and then we will try to get those in there. Of course, that's another thing that we need access for. I don't wanna do nothing if there's water in there. Yes, sir, thank y'all. Can I plug something?
Yes, sir.
Saturday night, weather permitting, Taylor Farm Park, outdoor movie. Free event, family movie, Sing. Sing is the name of the movie. When it gets dark, again, weather permitting, then we'll have the movie, it'll probably last an hour and a half or so. This one is at Taylor Farm Park, the one at the fall will be back here in the Veterans Park site. So, look forward to seeing you guys out there if you can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, my honor. Item number three, discuss action to adopt Resolution 17-16, approval by the Board of Commissioners of Paulding County, Georgia, of the issuance of revenue anticipation certificates by the Cobb County Kennison Hospital Authority.
We have Mr. Nichols here that actually represents the authority and is working on this to speak, but I wanted to make sure that I said a couple of things. One is that you are not issuing these certificates per se, you're approving them because part of the project, or which the underlying certificates were originally issued, located in Paulding County. This is a refunding series, which I like to say, layman's terms, is a refinance, for lack of a better way to put it. And what you're doing in this action is approving that Cobb County Kennison Hospital Authority issue certificates. So, that being said, Mr. Nichols is actually here to talk on the side.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Ms. Kimberley, she said a lot of the most important parts. We are here on behalf of the Cobb County, my name is Matt Nichols, and we're here on behalf of the Cobb County Kennison Hospital Authority to ask for so-called Tefra approval of the issuance by that authority of its hospital revenue anticipation certificates. As Ms. Kimberley said, the portion of the original deal in 2005 financed a hospital-based expansion at Paulding, well, sorry, Paulding Hospital. We're refinancing that now, and the IRS rules require the authority to come ask for that Tefra approval. A notice of a hearing was published in several newspapers, including here in the Dallas area. The attorney's hearing officer conducted a hearing pursuant to that notice, on a date and time and place specified in that notice. His report is attached to the resolution that has been proposed. No one appeared at that hearing, and offered any comment or asked any questions. So, the approval that's being asked is approval specifically to the extent required by the IRS regulations for the bond street tax intent, as stated in the resolution, not an endorsement of the project, or Wellstar, or Paulding Hospital, any of that. And as it was stated clearly in the notice to the public, the revenue certificates are not a debt or any sort of obligation in Paulding County. Any questions?
Thanks for being here, Ms. Nichols.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
And number four, at the request of Mr. Palnell to bring consent agenda item number three forward, approve the reception of $624,526 from the FAA for the fiscal year '17 Airport Improvement Program Grant, and $145,885.50 for the Supplement to Environmental Assessment Grant. And we have the airport director with us this morning, Mr. Terry Tibbetts, thanks for being here, Terry.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, gentlemen.
The reason this business comes before this board is the intergovernmental agreement that was signed in October of 2014, paragraph five, sub-paragraph E, says, "In addition to the contract payments, the county shall remain as the sponsor for the current and future Airport Improvement Program grants administered by the Federal Administration for Aviation Administration, and further agrees to take no action that is inconsistent with receiving or negatively affects such grants or any other federal or state grants to which the county or the authority are eligible to receive in conjunction with airports." So, that's the purpose for this being on the agenda item. And before I tell you about the current grant, I wanna update you on our previous grant that we had briefed back in the fall, that y'all had graciously approved. This was for the Wildlife Control Fence for the property, and that was a state grant in the amount of $400,000. And unfortunately, due to delays that were beyond our control, we could not meet the deadline established by the state of Georgia for completion of that grant. So, that grant was rescinded, and unfortunately, there's a county somewhere else in Georgia that is enjoying a construction job with that grant money that we were not able to capitalize on. So, the grant that I'm here to talk to you about today is actually two grants, and the funding for these grants, source of these funding, are from the Federal Aviation Administration, the FAA. And this money is generated based on taxes that are tacked on to aviation fuel sales, airline tickets, air cargo, and other aviation-related activities. Basically, it's user fees that are then funneled through the Airport Improvement Program to airports around the nation to maintain the infrastructure of the flying community. So, the two grants that we have been approved for, number one is a supplemental, it's actually a supplemental to an FY13 grant in the amount of $145,885.50. That FY13 grant was to pay for the court-mandated environmental assessment, that was a result of the court settlement in a lawsuit that involved the FAA. We were not actually the party of that suit, but the settlement required the FAA to go back and redo the environmental assessment. That environmental assessment has now been going on for four years, and the FAA has agreed to pay an additional $145,885. This covers the additional work that was required because of the unexpectedly large number of public comments that were received in the public comment period for this environmental assessment. So, the work has already been contracted, the work is effectively completed, the FAA hasn't approved the reporting yet, but it has been submitted to the FAA. So, these are funds that we're required to pay on behalf of the FAA, and the FAA is gonna reimburse us for those, so that we would ask that you approve that, so that this money doesn't have to come out of our pockets. Then, the official FY17 grant is, again, for reimbursement of projects that have already been completed. The first project is water monitoring. When the airport was built in 2007, or construction began in 2007, we were required, as part of the approval process, to do a 10-year water quality monitoring program. And we completed that this year. The final results was that the airport has had no negative impact on the creeks that surround the property there, and that's been well documented through a series of annual water monitoring contracts. And so, $68,353.30 of the FY17 grant is to reimburse the Paulding County Airport Authority for funds that we have expended in year nine and year 10 water monitoring. In addition, they have approved $556,172.70 to reimburse Paulding County Airport Authority for funds that we have expended toward wetlands mitigation for projects related to the airport. And again, these are funds that have already been expended by the airport and were being reimbursed. And the reason the FAA chose this year to only fund reimbursable projects for which we had already expended the money is because of all of the delays that have circled around construction activities at the airport, they felt it best to just go back and pay some of the past due bills and catch the FAA up on essentially money that's owed is probably too strong of a word, but money for which we qualify for reimbursement that we have already spent, and therefore, there are no environmental assessments that are required, there are no contracts, there's no bidding process. These are simply projects that have been completed successfully with all the appropriate regulatory paperwork that goes along with that. And we have already written the check, and so this is an opportunity for Paulding County to recoup funds that have already been expended. And because these have already been expended, there's no matching requirement. On our part, we've already paid the matching funds, so there is no requirement for Paulding County Airport Authority or for your board to match anything relative to this grant that we are receiving. This will simply be a check that will be sent to us in the amount of $624,526 to reimburse us for money that's already spent.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna confirm that no county funds are required.
No county funds are required, at all.
And to not receive this, do you think it would be in, in not keeping with the IGA wording of negatively affecting?
We absolutely believe that to reject this grant from the FAA would negatively affect Paulding County Airport Authority receiving funds in accordance with the Airport Improvement Program.
That's the conclusion of regular business. I would like to announce, although she's not here, I could've had a picture of it, a Ms. Kimberly White has been hired as the Senior Administrative Assistant, and she already had scheduled family vacation and reservations, so she is out the rest of this week. I look forward to y'all meeting her, and she's been working with Rebecca and Joey, kinda getting snapped in, and hope a lot of y'all have met her. So, entertaining, a motion that we hear from the public, signed up public participation before we go into executive session.
It's a move.
We have a motion to hear from Ms. Helms, is her second.
Second.
And the second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, Ms. Helms, we're pleased to have you come speak to us this morning.
Good morning. Good morning, boy. Mr. Chairman, we all like to consider ourselves law-abiding citizens, but I ask, have you ever gone one, two, or even five miles over the speed limit? Have you ever traveled in the county with items, including trash, not covered in the back of your truck? Have you ever had a campaign sign placed in the right way? I would like to remind you that this is your meeting to do the business of the county in front of the citizens. I was extremely disappointed in what happened at the last meeting. Not only was someone trying to degrade a post-commissioner regarding a personal matter, you allowed it to continue for several minutes, even after time had expired. What happened had absolutely zero to do with county business. Per Section 2-60 of the County Code, Decorum of Board Members, all members of the Board of Commissioners must conduct themselves in professional and respectful manner. All remarks should be directed to the Chair- All remarks should be directed to the Chair and not individual commissioners, staff, or citizens in attendance. Personal remarks are inappropriate. Let me also remind you, as approved and published by the VLC, the Rules for Public Participation, per Section 2-61, Item F, Decorum of the Members of the Public. Members of the public shall not make inappropriate or offensive comments at board meetings and are expected to comply with the rules of Decorum that are established for commissioners. Individuals who violate this board, any rules of this board, may be ruled out of order by the Chair on a point or a point of order by a commissioner. I've stood here many times, angry and upset about a decision made by this VOC and by individual post-commissioners, but I have never spoken to or about anyone regarding a personal issue ever. I would hope nothing like that has ever allowed to happen again. There's a time and a place for everything. This was not the place for that diatribe. I believe you owe Commissioner Davis and his children a public apology. Now, let me talk about the sign issue. I have a friend that has a business that was told he had to remove his sign as it was not compliant with the county ordinance. He reached out to me to see what he needed to do so his business would not suffer and where the appropriate placement may be, as other signs in the county had similar placements to his, but were not removed. I understand there's an ongoing process of updating the county ordinance as it exists today. But I was shocked to see that you decided without a vote by the other four commissioners to suspend that ordinance. You directed the Marshals Office not to require a sign ordinance to be enforced. I have a copy of an open records report, a request showing you made that directive. I didn't know the commission, the Chairman, has the authority to suspend any ordinance without a VLC vote. Am I mistaken? Is it appropriate to pick and choose what county laws are to be enforced? Regardless, aren't there state laws that must be followed? I was of the understanding a local ordinance could only be stronger than state law, but nevertheless than required by the state. Whatever decision is made regarding the sign ordinance, I would hope would be applied to everyone equally throughout the county. In the meantime, I would suggest all ordinances be enforced until changes are made. That is unless this board decides to do otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Helms. About further public participation, entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session. We'll talk about real estate and pending potential litigation. I'll make the motion, the motion for Commissioner Davis to go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all is in favor? We are adjourned for executive session. Good afternoon, everyone. I will call the regular work session back to order. There was no action taken in the executive session. Is there a motion that we adjourn the executive session?
No, sir. I make a motion to add to the agenda, authorize the county to submit and offer to purchase the SunTrust property located at the intersection of Georgia 120 and Georgia Business 6 for 1.7 million for a water system facility.
And is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Palnell, second by Commissioner Crowe. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries for one with Mr. Coles, the nay. And since our official.
Make a motion to adjourn our 10:00 AM meeting.
Second. Motion and a second to adjourn our 10:00 AM meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries five ayes.